December 2nd, 2025 at 7:00 PM, 50-50 South Lake Drive, Cudahy, Wisconsin. Prior to this meeting, notice was given to the community in all the appropriate places. Notice was also given to the news media that requested it, namely Milwaukee Journal, Scented North, and my Subshore Now dot com.
Rocco, Alderperson Levy?
Yes.
Alderperson Phillips?
Yes.
Alderperson Haynes?
Yes.
Alderperson Leferski?
Yes.
Alderperson St. Marie Belko?
Yes.
Also present is City Attorney Larson, City Administrator Larson, both police and fire chiefs, as well as various staff.
Okay, presentations. I'm sorry, please just, please.
I would like to declare from the United States of America and to your mother for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Presentations, presentation of resolution seventy-five ninety-four entitled, "A Resolution to Recognize the Twenty-Seven Years of Dedicated Service to the City of Cudahy by Kim Hens." Chief? Kim?
Alright, resolution number seventy-five ninety-four, resolution to recognize the twenty-seven years of dedicated service to the city of Cudahy. Whereas Kim Hens is retiring from the city of Cudahy on December thirty-first, 2025, after having served the city of Cudahy for over twenty-seven years. And whereas Kim Hens served from nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand fifteen as an emergency service dispatcher, and served from January twelfth, two thousand fifteen to May twenty-first, 2022, as a police clerk. And whereas Kim Hens was appointed as the confidential administrative assistant to the chiefs of police and fire department on May twenty-second, 2022, until retirement. And whereas Kim Hens has proven herself to be a valuable liaison between the Cudahy Police Department, Fire Departments, and City Hall. And whereas Kim Hens has been an active valuable member of the Cudahy community in an effort to advance the quality of life and make Cudahy a better place to live and do business. And whereas Kim Hens' community work extends well beyond the city of Cudahy. And whereas Kim Hens, that part of the Milwaukee County, walked to end Alzheimer's since two thousand nine as a member of Tracy's Trackers. And whereas Kim Hens' charity fundraising to end Alzheimer's has earned her the title of Elite Grand Champion. And now, therefore, be it resolved that Mayor Jankowski, the common council of the city of Cudahy, and all citizens of this community formally recognize the dedicated service of Kim Hens to the city of Cudahy and its citizens, and offer our best wishes to her for a happy and healthy retirement.
Presentation, item two, presentation of resolution number seventy-five ninety-five entitled, "A Resolution to Recognize the Twenty-Eight Years of Dedicated Service to the City of Cudahy by Janet Morris."
Hello, good evening, everyone. Janet and I have worked together for the last fifteen years running the municipal court, on the municipal judge here, city of Cudahy, for the last fifteen years. So, this is kind of a sad moment, but I'm also proud of her and happy for her. Resolution number seven-five-nine-five, "A Resolution to Recognize the Twenty-Eight Years of Dedicated Service to the City of Cudahy by Janet Morris." Whereas Janet Morris is retiring from the city of Cudahy on December thirty-first of 2025, after having served the city of Cudahy for over twenty-eight years. And whereas Janet Morris served from nineteen ninety-four to nineteen ninety-eight in the treasurer's office, and served from August twenty-second, two thousand one, to December thirty-first, two thousand five, as clerk of court. And whereas Janet Morris obtained a professional judicial assistant certificate from UW Milwaukee, which prompted the mentoring of several other municipal court clerks. And whereas Janet Morris served as the treasurer of District One Court Clerks Association for over ten years. Whereas Janet Morris served as chairperson in the Judicial Independence Committee of the Wisconsin Municipal Clerk Association. And whereas Janet Morris served on a special committee for judicial independence. That's a committee which rewrote chapters seven fifty-five and eight hundred of the Wisconsin statutes. Whereas Janet Morris has been an active valuable member of the city of Cudahy community in an effort to advance the quality of life and make Cudahy a better place to live and to do business. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Mayor Jankowski, the common council of the city of Cudahy, and all the citizens of this community formally recognize the dedicated service of Janet Morris to the city of Cudahy and its citizens, and offer our best wishes to her for a happy and healthy retirement.
Thanks. Alright, presentation item three, Land By Label, and on the scoop, we'll hand it over to Ian.
Hello, Ian Martin with Land By Label. Thank you all for having me. I did check some notes on my way down here. It was almost exactly three years that my company made an offer to buy the land from the CDA, and we had a signed letter of intent. In real estate development world, that's lightning fast to get to where we're at today. But an honest assessment is it did make me feel a little bit older and I do have a little more gray hair today than I did then, but it's really been a great experience. And so, I'll show you some pictures of the progress and happy to answer any questions you have. But the reality is, from day one, this has been a collaborative process, both the council, but also with the staff in particular at the city. There's just lots of things that go into these projects, and the staff from day one has always been very helpful. So, the fact that we're on here to give you a positive update and show you some good progress, I think a lot of that has to do with the good help we've had at the city so far. Who do I point this at? Yeah, go ahead, go ahead. So, I thought I'd just start with some general construction updates. And like I said, you can jump in with any questions you have. So, that was the crane at the groundbreaking last summer, so we're about fourteen, fifteen months into active construction. The images you have here were taken this evening, so this is sort of a real-time shot of where it's at. In the upper left, I'm talking as fast as I can, Kelly. In the upper left, that's our club room. So, if you remember, we had a, you walk into the property, the main entrance with the tile floor and the wainscoting and the wall covering, that's what you see on the right. We do have furniture, we just didn't move it in yet because still a little bit under construction. So, fast forward a couple of weeks, that'll all be furnished, and it will look really nice. It's, one of the things we do when we do these properties is we try to make them feel like you're walking into a hotel, and that you walk in, it's a comfortable place. There's always somebody there to see you when you walk in, so you kind of know where you're going, right? It's painful when you walk into a business and you actually don't know where you're supposed to go to see anybody. And so, we've kind of all planned it out to avoid that. You go in the entrance, you go up the stairway, and you get to the second-floor club room, which is what you see in the upper left, TV, kitchen, bar. That opens out into a rooftop deck that's on the sort of west side of the building. All of that amenity space will be open December thirty-first at the latest. And December thirty-first is the date that the entire project will be finished. If my contractor were here, he might quibble with me a little bit on that, but I'm pretty confident it'll be the thirty-first. One of the first things we do is try to get a model unit furnished and open, so when we have residents come through, we have something nice to show them. So, this is just an image of our model unit. One of the pleasant surprises, you would think in this day and age, you would have going into it a better sense of what all the views are going to look like out of the different units. From the third and fourth floor of this property looking east, you get pretty unobstructed lake views, which is a pretty nice surprise. All the units, you remember, have balconies on it, so it's a really nice, these are really nice units. So, that's sort of where we're at on the construction. We moved our, one great example of how helpful the staff has been, and Mayor, you've been involved in this as well, is we turn over the units from the top floor down. And that does take a lot of coordination, not just with our contractors, but with the city staff, the fire department, all of that, to make sure that it's, you know, it's protected and safe for residents to move in. So, we actually moved our first residents in on November first. And by the end of the year, we'll have about thirteen people, maybe more, living in the property, which is a great sign. When we do these and you open them, it's always hard to kind of get people to sign units when they're in a little bit of a construction zone. So, the fact that we're not even all the way done yet, we've got thirteen leases and people living there and getting good feedback, I think is a good start, certainly. So then, so I give you some of the leasing updates, these are just some more of the model images. We hired Harmonic Residential as our property management company. They have two full-time people that work there currently. Elena Berger is our property manager, and then Jake is our maintenance tech, both full-time. We actually, I'm sure some of you guys saw it, one of the challenges when you lease these things up is you have to find nearby office space or some sort of makeshift temporary spot to put your leasing staff, so they can lease units. And usually, you're showing people, you know, like a photograph of how great it's going to be. And so, it's always a little bit of a challenging environment. So, we had an idea that rather than do the sort of bad secondary office place and make a prospective tenant's walk, that we would buy an airstream and try to create some sort of unique leasing experience. So, the picture you see in the lower right is the Land By Label airstream that we branded with the scoop, parked it out front in July. So, just in time for last year's Fourth of July parade. We got lots of good feedback on it. It's one of those things where I'll never know if it was money well spent or not. It's hard to say whether somebody moved in because they saw a cool airstream parked out front, but it is a differentiating strategy for us, where none of our competitors do it. And I think it does say something about the quality of the project when tenants see that. Okay, so I won't give you the whole narrative again about where the name, the scoop, came from, but it really was sort of anchored to some of the history in Cudahy. When we went into this project, we had this great front of John Packard in Leighton. And so, the question was, how do we do something cool that's anchored to the history of Cudahy, but do it in a sort of new and imaginative way? So, you've all driven by, you can see what we came up with. This is, we hired an illustrator and a muralist to paint these, these images, all of which, it's obviously the scoop train was the starting inspiration for it. All of the characters on the train are tied to characters in the history of Cudahy that our illustrator found at the Historic Society. Obviously, DeSalvo's is noted, this was the former site of DeSalvo's, so it didn't feel right to do a nod to the history of Cudahy and the site without acknowledging it. The painting, or that panel, is actually a takeoff of an Edward Hopper painting called Nighthawks, which is obviously a lot more famous, but we thought it'd be cool to just sort of rebrand it for Cudahy. We've gotten, I'll be honest with you, when we do these sort of things, the goal is not, and in my opinion, can't be, to make everybody happy with what you do, because frankly, it's impossible to do it. What we try to do is something that's respectful of the history, thoughtful, creative, and conversation-provoking, just like the name. And so, I think we've accomplished that with this. We get lots of compliments, we get some people that also, if I'm being honest, say, you know, what the hell were you thinking? And that's fair. The main goal for us is that people know it's there, that it's tied to the history, and that they're talking about it. So, the last update I can share with you is it was a very, you know, sad day when Lakeside down the street at Leighton burned down and they had to close. We've now made a deal with Lakeside, and so they will be occupying the commercial space at the front of the building. So, we had four, just over four thousand square feet that we had always hoped would be sort of a community-based food and beverage. Not, you know, it's sort of bittersweet that it came, that it took a fire to do it, but we were very happy to have the opportunity. And so, Bob Tate and I have made a deal, and so he'll be moving in. And the goal for opening is before the Fourth of July next summer. So, we've got our architect engaged, we're going through the restaurant design. And I think it'll be a great amenity for not just the residents, but hopefully, hopefully, the city. Those are all the updates. Happy to answer any questions or leave it at that.
Any questions, anybody? Comments?
Yes, District Ordorman, I want to thank you for coming to Cudahy and developing that corner, because the city really needs that type of development. It's part of the vision plan of Cudahy. And I also want to applaud you for working with the owner of the business, Lakeside, and provide them a new home. And I wish you luck. And the only thing I give from residents is complaints about parking, you know, which is always an ongoing thing on Packer Avenue, Leighton Avenue, so.
Yeah, no, good, good, thank you, and good note on the parking. We are fully aware of the parking situation, and this is the most difficult time for the parking, because we're still trying to get the inside parking and the alley parking finished, so we can start moving all the cars in it. You know, the construction part of this is not easy, right? I mean, we've got lots of job trailers, our scoop leasing trailers there, it'll be gone tomorrow. We're going to move it down the street to our other building. But it does suck up a fair bit of parking. And so, I think once the building's done at the end of the year here, and we actually can move all of our residents off the street into the building, I'm hoping that the parking situation improves. But we do understand that it is a bit of a challenge right now.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you, Ian, that was great.
Public hearings, we have none. Public comment, agenda items only.
Anybody for public comment? One wants? Going twice? Okay.
Consent agenda items, item one, minutes of the water commission held August twenty-first, 2025. Item two, minutes of the regular common council meeting held November fourth, 2025. Item three, minutes of the special common council meeting held November thirteenth, 2025.
Approve.
Consent agenda.
Motion made. Motion made by Alderperson St. Marie Belko to approve consent agenda items, seconded by Alderperson Levy.
Rocco, Alderperson Levy?
Yes.
Alderperson Phillips?
Yes.
Alderperson Haynes?
Yes.
Alderperson Leferski?
Yes.
Alderperson St. Marie Belko?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Items removed from consent agenda, there is none. Old Business, item one, discussion and necessary action regarding minutes of the claims committee held October twenty-second, 2025. This was tabled at the prior council meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to place these minutes on file.
Motion made by Alderperson Leferski to place these minutes on file, click second. Seconded by Alderperson Levy.
Rocco, Alderperson Levy?
Yes.
Alderperson Phillips?
Yes.
Alderperson Haynes?
Yes.
Alderperson Leferski?
Yes.
Alderperson St. Marie Belko?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Item two, discussion and necessary action regarding resolution number seventy-one eighty-point-one-four entitled, "A Resolution Adapting the City Fee Schedule." At the last council meeting, this was tabled with a request to send it back to Rules Laws. Prior to sending it to Rules Laws, it was sent back to all department heads for any possible adjustments. There were two adjustments made by the engineering department, and then it was color-coded based off of categories for what is set by statute, what is not general fund, what is reimbursed to contractors, et cetera, and it was taken to Rules Laws.
You all have a chance to review it, I will bring it up for...
Do you want the markup, or do you want the final?
The final.
Finals, sorry, okay. Any specific page?
Just what was amended by Rules Laws.
Okay. Rules Laws and Licensing amended one item. It was a, I did here, permitted temporary use, which is at the very top of the screen, and special events. This is not the same as a regular special event permit. However, this permit was set at fifty dollars. Rules Laws requested it to be amended to one hundred dollars, so that is coming forward from Rules Laws and Licensing. There was a couple of categories that they wanted to be reviewed and brought back later. However, they didn't make recommendations on changes to those at this time.
Any questions?
Kelly, can you also state the reason for the review and based on the recommendation with the department heads in regards to that it was not to create revenue, but is to recover costs?
Correct. So, the majority of the fees, as the city attorney has stated on multiple occasions when reviewing them, is we are to be recouping our costs, not necessarily generating revenue on many of these items.
Thank you, Kelly. Alderperson Leferski.
Yeah, I guess I've got a number of questions based on the information that I gathered last week. I guess if I could ask the question, was there any changes to the budget that was presented on the twenty-third of September? Has there been any changes to that document?
For the budget, or the fee schedule is the item number?
Well, I think at our last meeting, if I'm not mistaken, the deciding vote was sort of cast with the understanding that the budget would be reevaluated. And I guess my question is, has it been, or is it the same document that we looked at on the twenty-third of September?
So, it would probably be the same, because we can't do any amendments until a fee schedule is, we get direction on the fee schedule, which is also tied to the tax law.
Correct.
So, we can do a budget amendment later to adjust for all that, then we'll get a final budget at that time.
Okay, but is, I understand that the fees were established because there was a shortfall in the budget. So, the fees are being based on the shortfall, so the shortfall hasn't been addressed in any manner, with the exception of the fees. Is that a correct statement?
So, the way that they're working together is the budget was developed based off of implementation of fee fees. We will have to bring forward a budget amendment depending upon what happens with the fee schedule, but we can't do that until we have determinations on what those fees are going to be.
If the fees move forward tonight, everything will be a go at that point?
We will still have to do a budget amendment, because the wheel tax portion of the fees was not approved.
Okay, so what was the shortfall going in?
It was about a million dollars.
Okay, and the wheel tax would have generated six hundred thousand?
Correct.
Okay. The initial deficit was one million, and that was with an insurance premium increase of seven percent?
Correct.
Okay. I guess this is, I had asked for information on the GFL contract. I didn't get it from City Hall, but it came to me in another manner. And there, the GFL contract is based on sixty-seven seventy-five garbage carts. And looking at that contract, the current charge is seven hundred thousand fifty-nine, three hundred forty-two dollars. And at our meeting last week, Rules Laws and Licenses, you stated the increase would be four and a half to five percent?
Correct.
And that's according to the contract based on the CPI, consumer base index?
So, they have a range in the contract that allows them to go anywhere from a minimum of two percent up to six percent. We reached out to them to find out what the exact increase will be, and they have not responded, so we estimated a five percent.
Okay, yeah, the contract says two and a half to a maximum of six percent. And at twenty dollars, which is the increase on the fee schedule, that comes to a total of one thirty-five, one hundred thirty-five thousand, and that number came from you last week, Kelly. The six percent increase times the number of carts we have would amount to forty-five thousand five hundred dollars in round numbers. So, that puts us about ninety thousand, and if you're saying five percent, that would increase it by thirty-seven, let's call it thirty-eight thousand dollars, which is just shy of a hundred thousand. And at a previous meeting, the city administrator stated that the additional monies in that twenty-dollar fee increase was to cover the cost of the Tuesday drop-off?
It's not quite that simple. It's all of it. Involved, the Tuesday drop-off is a factor, but the additional hauling weight from the Tuesday drop-off, yeah, it's not that's a B seventy-two.
Which also increased usage. Usage is up twenty-one percent overall since the dump re-opened, and that increases the tipping costs related to recycling and garbage, which also are charged to that fund.
Okay, but that's nearly a hundred thousand dollars. And if we look at the Tuesday drop-off, we were all here when it was decided it was a pilot program. And I don't know if the survey was ever conducted to see if it was warranted or if people liked the Tuesday, or if it really mattered to them. I don't know if we ever did the survey, but it was a pilot program. If you take the Tuesday drop-off out of the mix, what does that do to that twenty-dollar increase? Do we have any idea?
It wouldn't be exceptionally impactful. It would definitely be a bit of a savings. That fund is not built a fund balance. It would take us quite a bit of time to estimate out what Tuesday drop-off would be, because we would have to look at all the charges for tipping costs for that period of time, what's all brought, how much time is spent, staff time. We don't allocate based off of just the number of hours, staff time. We do percentage-based for an average of where they spend their time. So, that will have to come from the department level for the exact number of hours within the payroll system. We don't allocate it that way. It's hard to...
Attorney Larson?
Just a point of order. Our agenda item is to review the fee schedule, not the budget. The budget was approved by the council. So, we have an approved budget. I understand that we may have an amendment to that budget coming forward at a future date, but that's not on our agenda today. What's on our agenda is fees, and the fees are shown.
I'm pretty sure we're talking about fees, Mr. City Attorney, right now.
Well, it may help the conversation then to isolate what fees we're talking about.
Well, right now, we're talking about the additional garbage cart fee.
That fee is to support the approved budget of that department.
So it's not, it's not really part of the garbage cart fee. It's, it's supporting the drop-off site?
All, yes, all of that. It supports the drop-off site, um, all of the garbage collection and tipping fees that have to happen at the drop-off site, plus it supports the GFL contract entirely, uh, for the garbage portion.
Okay.
So it's multifaceted for what that fund covers.
Okay, um... The urban forestry fee, uh, I was told would generate two hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. And without getting into the specifics on that, uh, the annual unit charge is thirty-nine, um, it comes to thirty-nine dollars per unit. And, um, so if you divide that into the total amount of money to be generated, that comes out to, uh, seven thousand units. I- is there a breakdown of, uh, number of industrials versus single families? And three families and four families?
Uh, they're broken out as commercial, industrial, multifamily, public, and residential. So there are three hundred and fifty-two. This is actually as, uh, I believe this was, this report was run early, well, it's actually early September. We're still using that. So if some additional meters have come out or changed, it'll, it'll be fluctuating there. Three hundred and fifty-two commercial, fifty-eight industrial, two hundred and twenty-eight multifamily, twenty-four public, and four thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight residential. And that's the same breakdown that's used for the two additional new fees that are proposed.
S- s- street lighting or urban forestry?
It's both.
You're right.
It's gonna be both.
Right. Yeah, okay. So if you total all those fees up, um, what's, what's expected to be generated is one point two million dollars. So that will cover the shortfall in itself without the wheel tax. Am I correct?
To a certain extent, um, based off how time is allocated for, uh, the departments. They're... They weren't being one hundred percent allocated throughout the general fund in the proper categories, so we did have to update those, um, because budgets in certain areas, like say we control, weren't a hundred percent self-supported. So some of those things were adjusted to take care of them.
So the six hundred thousand dollar wheel tax that would have been generated was sort of like extra money? Really believed for it?
If, if I recall, and Kelly correct me if I'm wrong, this was all figured out when we were still using twenty percent as a placeholder for health insurance costs, um, because we didn't have our health insurance numbers at the time. We were discussing this with council members.
Initially, yes. Uh, however, at that point, we were discussing a ninety-five dollar wheel tax, and when we got the reduced quote for health insurance at seven percent, we were able to reduce that request down to fifty options.
So it was, in a sense, it would, it would create a buffer should those insurance costs not have come down?
Correct.
And, and is the, uh, premium increase still at seven percent?
Actually, we're able to work in a six, a six percent decrease.
So it's at one percent?
No, it was a six percent decrease.
Yeah.
A s- a six percent decrease?
From the current.
From the current.
Seven percent.
No, from the current year. So it was a six percent decrease from the current year.
Okay.
It's important to note that those things all come together after the budget is brought forward in September.
Uh, I've, I've got nothing, no further questions.
Anybody else? Alderperson Haynes, Chair, Rules Laws, want to just give a summation of how that went and what the recommendations are?
Uh, yes, um, we did a complete review line by line of the twenty-twenty-six city fee schedule. Um, and the areas that we could make amendments to, um, we, at the time, we did not make any increase except for the one for the, uh, um, temporary permit. Uh, and then referred back to, uh, a couple of departments, especially with the parking permit with the police department. And either January or February will come back and do an amendment to the city, uh, the schedule at that time in regards to the parking permit. Um, and we rely on the various department heads because they're the experts. And we went with a lot of department heads' recommendations for the proposed fee schedule submitted. And I just want to say that it, the reason I tabled this from the common cause was to have a review and go line by line to make sure we have all the ducks in a row. And areas that we could make amendments to that wasn't, um, restricted by state statute or other codes or resolutions that we would have to, um, make a motion to that at a later time. And under the time constraints, the time limit, because, um, this fee schedule needs to be approved. That way the tax bills could be sent out on time. And, uh, we're racing against the clock because the mailing has to go out by December eighth, correct?
Has to be the first by eight, correct?
So at this time, I would make a motion to accept the twenty-twenty-six city fee schedule.
I'll sign it.
Motion made by Alderperson Haynes to accept the fee schedule. Twenty-twenty-six, seconded by Alderperson Levy.
Roll call.
And then adopt the resolution.
Adopt the...
Yeah. Adopt the resolution.
Alderperson Saint Marie Belco.
Last line before the vote. Um, still disappointed, uh, again, yeah, because we have to approve, approve the ordinance, get the system. Uh, to have these two fees, but the constituents, my constituents, citizens of Cudahy do not want it to happen. Um, we have amounts in the fee schedule that were not adjusted after reevaluation, after I was actually told that, well, after our last meeting, we had a special meeting, and then, you know, because we didn't do the wheel tax, the department heads finally came, we were able to go back and do their budgets and bring them, went to Rules and Laws, watched that, to observe that, again, these two fees, urban forestry and streetlights, did not decrease when they had to go back and look at their budgets. So I guess they're not toeing the line as far as because somebody has to make the hard decisions in the end. Thank goodness, I guess, our health insurance, and I don't know what that exact number and how that impacts our budget because we haven't had a special meeting for finance to look at our budget, to talk about that and these new occurrences. So it's pretty hard to really vote on these current stated in this resolution, these specific amounts for such things as urban forestry and streetlights, these two new fees. I'm not excited about the garbage fee after we had to raise it just in twenty-twenty-five to a hundred and fifty-five. That has to go up another, another twenty dollars. But I'm familiar with the contract from GFL and the cost of having the, the drop-off site, which is important towards citizens. Not to say if we're toeing the line, the extra day could go. Everybody has to give a little bit. Our citizens are giving. You're putting extra fees, new fees onto them. Not alone that out of our control, first their tax bills are gonna get hit with the referendum dollars, um, put on their taxes from the referendum from the school. So we gotta figure this out. So hopefully we'll be soon having a overarching meeting to let us know on the new options, options. And yes, take the time and figure out how much that Tuesday costs. Because it, let me tell you, when we didn't, couldn't let people go to the dump, we sat and figured it out so we could make it happen. So now we gotta bag it out to still make this happen for the best interest of our citizens. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion on the floor. Is there any more discussion? Anybody? Okay. So we have a motion on the floor to adopt a resolution for this fee schedule by Alderperson Haynes, seconded by Alderperson Levy.
Roll call, Alderperson Levy?
Yes.
Alderperson Phillips?
Yes.
Alderperson Haynes?
Yes.
Alderperson LeFerski?
No.
Alderperson Saint Marie Belco?
No.
Motion carries three to two. New business item one, discussion and necessary action approving the appointment of the city of Cudahy election inspectors for the twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven term. This, um, new schedule includes the political appointments that were due by November thirtieth from the two main parties. Have any questions? Be looking for a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the city of Cudahy election inspectors for twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Alderperson Haynes to approve the city of Cudahy election inspectors for twenty-twenty-six, seconded by Alderperson Saint Marie Belco.
Roll call, Alderperson Levy?
Yes.
Alderperson Phillips?
Yes.
Alderperson Haynes?
Yes.
Alderperson LeFerski?
Yes.
Alderperson Saint Marie Belco?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Department manager elected official updates. We'll let the scoop out.
Yeah, so we got the update from the scoop, so we can just move on to the next one.
Okay. Introduction and passage of ordinances and resolutions. Ordnances, we have none. Resolution, item one, discussion and necessary action regarding resolution number sixty-three eighty-seven point ten entitled Resolution to Designate City Depositories Pursuant to Wisconsin Statute sixty-two seventeen point seven. Uh, this is annual. We have not updated any of the banks, however, this does need to be approved, approved via.
Move to approve.
Okay. Motion made by Alderperson Saint Marie Belco to approve Resolution sixty-three eighty-seven point one zero entitled Resolution to Designate City Depositories Pursuant to sixty-two seventeen, parent seven of Wisconsin statutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderperson Levy.
Roll call, Alderperson Levy?
Yes.
Alderperson Phillips?
Yes.
Alderperson Haynes?
Yes.
Alderperson LeFerski?
Yes.
Alderperson Saint Marie Belco?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Item two, discussion and necessary action regarding resolution number seventy-five ninety-four entitled A Resolution to Recognize the Twenty-Six Years of Dedicated Service to the City of Cudahy by Ken Hens.
So moved.
Okay. Motion made by Alderperson Saint Marie Belco to, uh, adopt Resolution seventy-five ninety-four, Resolution, Resolution to Recognize the Twenty-Six Years of Dedicated Service to the City of Cudahy by Ken Hens. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderperson Levy.
Roll call, Alderperson Levy?
Yes.
Alderperson Phillips?
Yes.
Alderperson Haynes?
Yes.
Alderperson LeFerski?
Yes.
Alderperson Saint Marie Belco?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Item three, discussion and necessary action regarding resolution number seventy-five ninety-five entitled A Resolution to Recognize the Twenty-Eight Years of Dedicated Service to the City of Cudahy by Janet Morris.
Move to approve.
Okay. Motion made by Alderperson LeFerski to approve Resolution number seventy-five ninety-five entitled Resolution to Recognize the Twenty-Eight Years of Dedicated Service to the City of Cudahy by Janet Morris. Do I have a second?
Second.
Who wants it? Second by Alderperson Saint Marie Belco.
Roll call, Alderperson Levy?
Yes.
Alderperson Phillips?
Yes.
Alderperson Haynes?
Yes.
Alderperson LeFerski?
Yes.
Alderperson Saint Marie Belco?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Item four, discussion and necessary action regarding resolution number seventy-five ninety-six entitled A Resolution to Establish Local Sewer and Star, Stormwater Charge Rates in the City of Cudahy for twenty-twenty-six. So the department finished review of these, um, our actual local portions aren't changing. We do need to update our local portions as it pertains to, uh, the MMSD charges. So these are to reflect the increases that MMSD charges us.
Any questions?
Um, what's, how much was the increase from MMSD?
Uh, Tim, do you want to discuss the MMSD portion? It's very hard to change it.
Yeah. The MMSD annual connection charge went up, um, from forty-two dollars, uh, to, um, sixty dollars. And the volume went from a dollar ninety-six per hundred cubic feet to two dollars and forty-one cents. We do also, in the same organs, we also are increasing our stormwater charge too. As you talked about last year, stormwaters got a lot of catch-up to play, um, after years of, you know, um, there's many of the fundamentals of the stormwater, so it's a play catch-up. But on the sanitary sewer, yep, it's kind of actually the locals, the MMSD pass-through.
Thank you, JJ.
Any other questions, comments? Sir Armond will be looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. Motion made by Alderperson Levy to adopt Resolution number seventy-five ninety-six entitled Resolution to Establish Local Sewer and Stormwater Charge Rates in the City of Cudahy for twenty-twenty-six. Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderperson Saint Marie Belco. I'll roll call.
Alderperson Levy?
Yes.
Alderperson Phillips?
Yes.
Alderperson Haynes?
Yes.
Alderperson LeFerski?
Yes.
Alderperson Saint Marie Belco?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Public comment on any subject?
Um, can we comment on the, uh, poll sessions now?
It's public comment on any subject, so if you would like to comment, please, uh, state your name and address for the record as the mic draw.
Uh, my name is Peter Pavarua. I want to comment on, on the, uh, to consider the sale of the parcel six-three-one-zero-zero-four-zero-zero-zero.
Can you please state your address for the record?
The address of my property or my home.
Whichever you choose.
Uh, the property that would, that would, uh, sale would be impacting is thirty-four sixty-five.
Oh, I'm sorry, the residence or the business that you occupy in the city?
Yeah, thirty-four sixty-five East Weyton.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
And my comment is, uh, you know, you have the guy up here from the school and you guys, all everybody talking about how it's gonna be, uh, hard, you know, and it's already hard for parking or whatever. And that, that property, from what I look up, is the parking lot right behind the Charleston Cafe, Pablo Luigi's, and, uh, uh, the brickyard. And if that were go to, go to sale, um, and someone, you know, that, that's been a parking lot for as long as I can remember. And, uh, you know, the people, everybody around there, uh, relies on that for their businesses. You got, uh, um, uh, a lot of people have invested a lot of time and money in that entertainment district and are gonna take away the parking from them, or possibly take away the parking from them, which would definitely impact everybody in that area. LaCreme, myself, Brickyard, um, everybody that's like in that area. The school would probably have people walking from over there. You have, uh, uh, the one business that, you know, that they built there, East Kingdom, I, I don't know the name of that property, it's a subsidizing one there, that still has vacancies in there, which if that were to lose, and which when that was built was, you know, contingent that that parking space would be there. You wanna get these places rented out and now, you know, and it's, and it's vacant, you're gonna get somebody that's might be considering, all of a sudden, you find out, well, the parking's gone, they're just gonna go down to somewhere else. And, and we're gonna have all, you know, open businesses, you know, open, uh, um, shops and stuff where nobody in them, or people that, you know, can't stay afloat, you know, and the constant turnover, you know, if, if you can even get them to rent it out. You know, and some of these, like, decisions that I see being made or whatever are just, you know, turning our city into like a ghost town. You know, nobody wants to become an investor, you know, and I put a fortune into the cafe over there, into that property over there. You know, you know, uh, and made it the cafe, you know, because, uh, I lived in the city my whole life. I figured it was something that we needed. It wasn't my cup of tea. I didn't even start drinking coffee till a few months before we decided to do that because, uh, um, I'm a contractor, I'm a builder, and I was gonna make that a flooring store. All the friggin' Starbucks cups and everything that I see in my kids' and wife's cars, something that I say, hey, you know, I, you know, probably built three or four Starbucks myself, you know, it's time to put back into the city. Also, for the past thirty years, I, I worked like a hired fireman for thirty years doing subcontracting. I worked in base, I shore worked, Whitefish Bay, Fox Point. I worked for, like, a lot of the richest people in the state, and I bring my money back... I worked for like a lot of the richest people in the state, and I bring my money back here to Cudahy to invest in there. And I'm, now I'm like thinking that, you know, uh, um, you know, everybody's gonna lose their opportunities because, uh, um, they wanna sell the parking spaces that are, you know, why can't we figure out a way to park the situation before we get rid of the ones that we have, that we already have, it's already there, it's already built. Um, it doesn't need anything but plowing, and I'm sure that, you know, and, and if it was gonna be sold or to somebody or whatever, I think that everybody, you know, you know, even if somebody came and offered, hey, I wanna buy this thing, it should be offered for everybody else to, uh, uh, try to purchase it as well.
So we're, we're past the three minutes, that's all I get for public comment, so your comments are noted, and we thank you.
Please say your name and address. Robert Dice, and the property that I own in that area will be three-four-five-five East Layton Avenue.
Thank you.
So the, I, I don't necessarily know what's going on with that parking lot, I don't want to talk about the same parking lot because my business is located right next to Peter's. But, uh, so the city is considering the sale of that entire lot, is that correct? Or is that incorrect?
You won't answer the question.
This is your, this is your time for comment.
This is all a comment, we can't use.
No problem. So, yeah, I guess I'd like to know more about that, I don't know if I know more about that, but that parking lot is vital to the businesses in the area, there's just not enough street parking, there's, there's, there's around. Um, I do also own the lot in between my building and Peter's building, and I've definitely, I have plans to build a building there in the future, nothing concrete, no, no timeline, but there's no way I can do that if I don't have the parking. On top of that, if that lot is sold, I don't know how my employees, my tenants upstairs would access the parking lot that's on the back of my vacant property, I don't know, my dumpsters would get picked up. Uh, like Peter said, if that is being sold, I, I'd like, uh, a chance to buy it myself, not that I wanna buy the parking lot, but potentially. Um, yeah, that's about it. Okay, thank you.
There comes members Sal Pora, Papa Luigi's Pizza, thirty-four seventy-five East Layton. Uh, so I approached the mayor on this parking lot issue, it's not that we're, we're cutting you guys off or anything, the parking lot's gonna be open to everybody, same as it was. The only information I needed, I approached the mayor is I needed more space for expansion. We're busting at the seams at Papa Luigi's, we've been there for forty-three years, we doubled the size twice. We have eighteen cooks on a weekend on Friday standard, and we're with, there, there's not enough space in that kitchen. So we wanted to expand it out, you guys approved the plan that we had, but it's not what we really wanted. The dumpsters are in the way, so we needed an extra twelve, thirteen feet. So I approached the mayor to see if it's available, he said, yeah, no one approached us. They did approach the Brickyard at one time for some land and they didn't want it, you're the first guy who approached us, so we could do it. What is your plan, Sal? You're not gonna take it away from anybody else, I said, no, I don't wanna take it from anybody else, I, I'm their business owners like I am, you take away that parking from those people, they'll suffocate. So I'm not here to bully anybody or steal the parking lot, I just needed more space. Actually, I wanted that triangle in the back, uh, so I could, uh, put my dumpster in there, put maybe a corral around it and move my dumpsters over there. It also enhanced the, the value of the building, it was, it was, is it for sale? He said, yes. So I said yes about it. So the reason we really wanted to purchase it and I approached it is for the expansion and, and, and for timely, uh, matters of, of snow removal and grass cut, so I have control, not that I have to call the D P W or send my trucks out to plow, because we do have plow trucks, we send them out. Uh, so I know you guys are very busy, you got the streets to handle, the parking lot's probably the last thing you guys do. So that's why we approached, uh, the mayor on this, on this matter, to expand. Not that we're cutting anybody out the alley or anybody, uh, we did, I did come up a plan, I mentioned it to the mayor, he thought it was fair that we would share the expenses. Papa Luigi's would pay two fifths, Brickyard would pay two fifths, and, uh, and Charleston Cafe would pay one fifth of the expenses. So I thought that was fair.
Anything else? Any questions? Thank you, Sal.
Can I, can I speak again? Just because of the order obtaining additional information.
If you wanna talk to Sal after, he'll be happy to talk to me about it.
Skip Jagee, twenty-six thirty-six, East Eaton Lane. Wisconsin Open Meeting Law Compliance Guide. Wisconsin Open Meetings law acknowledges the public is entitled to the fullest and most complete information regarding government affairs as long as it does not hinder the conduct of government business. All meetings of government bodies such as the city council shall hold publicly and open to all citizens to all times unless otherwise expressly provided by law. The Open Meetings law does not require a government body to allow members of the public to speak or actively participate in the open session meeting. The law only grants citizens the right to attend and observe open meetings. However, the law permits a government body to set aside a portion of the open meetings as a public comment period. While public comment periods are not required. If a government body decides to have such a comment period, it must be included in a meeting notice. There are other statutes, other than the open meeting laws, that require government bodies to hold public hearings regarding certain matters. Unless such statutes specifically applies, a government body has wide discretion over any public comment period it chooses to permit. Besides, the discretion over whether to allow public comments at all. A body has a discretion to decide to what extent it may allow public participation. For example, a government body can limit how much time each citizen has to speak. If a government body permits a public comment period, it may receive information from the public. It may discuss any subject raised by a member of the public. The body may not in any formal action on such subject unless it was identified in the body's meeting notice. If a citizen raises a subject that is not included in the meeting notice, it may be advisable for the body to limit substantive discussion on the subject until a subsequent, subsequent meeting in which the body can include the subject on a meeting notice. It's not that you can't answer these people's questions because they're pretty simple questions. It's that you choose not to answer. And the worst part is, Mr. Mayor, you, the alderman, a department head, or a secretary never gets back to the citizens of Cudahy on their questions or concerns. I was a U A W president for two thousand people for three terms. If I didn't get back to my constituents, I never would have gotten elected again, just saying.
Anybody else?
Yeah. Papa forty-four sixty-seven something, correct? Just a, and, and I'm gonna get into the, uh, whether you can speak or you can't. Uh, hopefully either my alderman or the mayor or someone would get back to me. Is this, I, I, I'm confused and I know I'm an old man, but, um, is this streetlight fee and this forestry fee, is this a one-shot deal to cover the deficit? I, I'm not getting it. I just wanna know if this is gonna be one time and then go away, we never had these fees before, correct? I don't know, so if that, if this is a one-time thing, I can deal with that. But if it's every, every year, where that fee will go up every year, it's really not a fee, it's taxed. Thank you.
Tom Schmidt, thirty-nine fifty-four, East Birchwood. Um, got a lot to talk about here, but I probably, I don't have nothing to write on because I can't walk in the door and get, uh, an agenda, I can't come down here and get an agenda. Um, don't know what they're talking about because we were allowed to, uh, well, there was a mayor one time, I walked in here and I got eighty-one pages of a uh, budget, and I left after four and a half hours because it was a line-by-line budget. Now, last year we had elders in here, they showed us a piece of pie, some had cream on it, some had whipped cream on it, some had cherries on the top, didn't make no difference, twenty minutes or eighteen minutes, it was done with. You people had a rough, a rough time this year, but I'll tell you what, you better start now. No more nonsense. The previous administration, they said that they had the budget by September. There's no reason in the world why we have to be here right now doing something like this. And I honestly, what I heard, I didn't know we voted on the budget. This was only supposed to be for fees. We ended up with a million dollars in hot, don't know how to get it, well, let's go throw it the monkey on somebody else's back. No. You people are running out of monkeys. That's exactly what it is. You're running out of monkeys. You got a guy that wants to ask some questions, try to get some answers, well, all of a sudden, this guy don't like this guy, that guy don't like that guy. Christ, Nick, I'm in Cudahy, I'm not in Washington. Enough is enough.
Anybody else? Okay. Seeing that there is none, we'll close public comment.
We want a close session.
Motion going to closed session.
Let me read the item, well, um, item one, adjourn into closed session per Wisconsin statutes nineteen point eight-five-one E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting public tests by public business whenever competitive or marketing reasons require a closed session, A to consider the sale of the personal or six-three-one-zero-zero-four-zero-zero.
They said that all the departments write that meeting.
We'll be like, oh, we're on closed session.
Remember, we're today. Who's all the, all the person leaving? All of the sessions, I think, are doing their smartest.
I'll second.
Say, we all understand.
Roll call, all the person Levy?
Yes.
All the person Phillips?
Yes.
All the person Haynes?
Yes.
All the person Leversky? I'm sorry, all the person Leversky?
Yes.
You can listen.
And all the person St. Ray Belko? We are in closed session at eight o'clock. You'll have to collect your items and exit the room.
Say again?
You'll have to collect your items and exit the room, we're going into closed session.
Right, yes.